Counsel if you will come to order. It is 7:00 PM on October the 10th and we will convene into regular session and we do have a quorum with all members present. In just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by Pastor Joel Kele, of Barah Church. Where is Joel? I saw him earlier. There he is, hiding back there. And then I'll ask you to remain standing while we are led in the pledges by Council Member Schaffner, first to the American flag and then to the Texas flag. Joel?
Let's the prayer first.
All right, let's pray. Father, thank you for our town, for those that serve it. I pray a blessing upon them, this staff and this team, and pray we would seek to love people well, to find common ground to work towards peace. Be with those men and women that protect us, those that run to trouble when others run from it, and protect them and their families. Bless this meeting. May we be respectful and kind and look to build a great place to call home and we thank you for the way you've set a great example for us in the ways to love. And it's the Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Joel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We are down to citizens' presentations in our agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, I don't see anybody that wanted to speak during this time. The only speaker was during the proclamation, is that right?
You have at your dais, the one that was emailed on...
So, counsel, just to bring to your attention, I'm not going to read into the record. Our procedures don't allow that unless the person's here. So you have a letter, email from Wayne Hummer at your dais, if you care to read that, please. All right, we're down to announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager classes update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding the same. The Fall Festival and Highway 114 Sound Barrier. Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The Fifth Annual Fall Festival is scheduled for October 14th. It'll begin at 3:00 and end at 6:00 o'clock. As in the past, we're going to have various activities for the kids during the festival, bounce houses, petting zoo, free pumpkins and the like. We expect about 800 of our residents to attend and again, we would encourage all the residents to come on out and enjoy a great day in the park. I've also got an update on the sound wall adjacent to Highway 114. According to TechDOT, they're still awaiting some revised engineering plans that are necessary based upon a late-discovered conflict that they had with one utility with where the sound wall was previously to go. Based upon the utility that's there, it appears that they're going to move the sound wall between seven and eight feet closer to 114 away from our residents' homes. It'll put it up a little bit higher on the berm and what they're trying to do is fast-track the engineering plans and so they're going to allow the contractor to submit the plans that are going to be drawn up by the contractor. They feel like that's going to save some time. And as of right now, they can't give a specific date on when the sound wall will begin, but they are still cautiously optimistic that it will complete in time, which was the original date sometime late spring of 2018. And that's all I have, pending any questions.
Counsel, anybody have any questions about those matters? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items two through four? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I get a second?
One second.
Councilmember Kurtz moved and Flurry seconded. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Item two, consider to take appropriate action regarding the... Oops, I'm sorry, I'm not going to read those, that was consent agenda. All right, we're down to the regular session and item number five. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of town council recognizing October 2017 as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. The chair would recognize Alicia Flurry for reading the proclamation and for making
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2017-09. Whereas bullying is the repeated physical, verbal, sexual, and/or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people; and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones; and whereas bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of U.S. children and adolescents, with 28% of students in grades six through 12 having experienced bullying, approximately 30% of students admitted to bullying others, and 70.6% of young people say they have seen bullying in their schools; and whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, and children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated; and whereas researchers and child psychologists believe educating our children while they are young helps them to cope with adversity, trauma, tragedy, threats, and significant sources of stress; and whereas more than 50% of bullying situations stop within 10 seconds when a peer intervenes, and school-based bullying prevention programs decrease bullying by up to 25%; and whereas studies show adults can help prevent bullying by talking about bullying, modeling kindness and respect, and encouraging children to get help when they and/or others are involved in bullying. Now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. Section one, Town of Trophy Club schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. Pass and approve by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 10th day of October 2017.
And would I have a motion, please?
I motion that we accept the proclamation number 20-17-09 as read.
Do I have a second? All right, so I do have a second by Jensen. And I do have one speaker who wanted to speak on this item before a call for the vote. Scott Fawley, do you want to address us, Scott? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Scott Fawley, 2407 Lilly Field Drive, Trophy Club, Texas. And actually, I'm going to read this more for my daughter. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and fellow citizens of Trophy Club, I am Scott Fawley and it is my pleasure to be able to speak on behalf of my daughter, Mackenzie. She would love to have stood before you tonight but is currently in final preparations for a tennis tournament that is occurring this weekend. Hello, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Fawley. I am 17 years old, and actually tomorrow she'll be 18 years old, and a senior at Byron Nelson High School. In August, our pleasant community was shaken with the news that one of our students lost hope and chose suicide due in large part to bullying. Having dealt with the pain of bullying myself, I know how difficult those feelings can be to cope with. In an effort to prevent other families from having to experience this, I am determined to create a functional anti-bullying campaign called My Bully Free Community. The mission statement of that group is, it's a group geared towards bullying prevention and we are a group of individuals that all have the same passion to bring about change as well as encourage an environment where bullying is not tolerated. The members of My Bully Free Community are standing up and taking action. This group will offer a supportive place for discussion and opportunities to come together via organized events occurring throughout the year. We believe there is a serious need for a group like this within our community and it is time to stop bullying in order to preserve the lives of those we care about. I want to thank all of those who have shared their stories and experiences. Many of you have joined with me in the My Bully Free Community campaign and I encourage any others who feel as I do to join in as well. This excitement to help others is what will help to transform our community. It is through you as volunteers that we can act as a beacon of light that begins in our community and grows beyond our borders. Currently, we have a Facebook page and group with hundreds of residents participating. The group is very new and there are many exciting activities in the planning stages. For the purposes of outreach, we are currently working on a webpage in which we will create special chat rooms for teens called Find a Friend. This will help to provide mentoring and act as a coping mechanism for those that are experiencing the consequences of bullying. We are happy to say that there have been many citizens that have reached out to us to volunteer and we are finalizing the plans for an October event. I am excited to be a part of encouraging positive change in our community and beyond. Thank you for allowing me to stand before you and share the vision of My Bully Free Community on the... as we pass this proclamation of the anti-bullying. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you, Scott. All right, if there's no one wishing to speak about this item, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor approving proclamation 2017-09, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Alicia, do you have somebody here to Jamie Farber to receive the proclamation?
I do. Ms. Jamie Farber, Director of Counseling for NISD.
Jamie, if you would come up and Alicia, would you go down?
She's been very instrumental and will be instrumental in bringing awareness initiatives into our schools throughout the district, so we felt this was the perfect presentation to give to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and for what you do. And let's get a picture. Thank you so much and thanks for what you do. And for those of you who didn't get a ribbon, we do have extra ribbons if you'd like a Item number six, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town of Trophy Club recognizing October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Once again, I'll recognize Councilmember Flurry to read the motion, read the proclamation and make the motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2017-11. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women in the United States accounting for 30% of newly diagnosed cancers; and whereas in 2017, about 252,710 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women, and 2,370 cases will be diagnosed in men in the United States; and whereas every two minutes, one case of breast cancer is diagnosed in a woman in the United States and one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime; and whereas mammography and x-ray of the breasts is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer; and whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause; and whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. Now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Section one, extending our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. Pass and approve by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 10th day of October 2017. I move to approve the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2017-11 as read.
Do I have a second? Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. We didn't have someone who was going to receive this proclamation. Item seven, consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council recognizing October 2017 as Domestic, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. That's proclamation 2017-12, I'd recognize Mayor, Councilmember Rowe, I mean Mayor Protem Rowe as the person to read and move.
Thank you, sir. Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, supporting October 2017 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Trophy Club. Whereas for the past 37 years, Denton County Friends of the Family has provided compassionate, comprehensive services for those impacted by rape, sexual abuse, and domestic violence in the Denton community while partnering with the community to promote safety, hope, healing, justice, and prevention; and whereas by working together, shelters, affiliated programs, municipalities, and concerned individuals can change social attitudes about and the response to intimate partner violence; and whereas all persons have the right to live without fear, abuse, or oppression; and whereas one in three Texans will experience domestic violence in their lifetimes; and whereas Denton County Friends of the Family received more than 3,000 crisis calls from victims of domestic violence and provided 7,801 days of emergency shelter to women and children in the past year; and whereas the Denton County Friends of the Family individuals and groups with over 10,000 hours of services through counseling, advocacy, case management, and support services; and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any specific group or people but affects people of all races, backgrounds, economic levels, education levels, family structures, ages, and religions; and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates members of our community's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity in the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, religious, and economic abuse; and whereas advocates, professionals, volunteers, and community members concerned with domestic violence will devote the month of October to raising awareness about the causes, interventions, and prevention of this devastating crime, now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town of Trophy Club and Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, does hereby proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Pass and approve by the Town of Trophy Club, by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this day, the 10th of October 2017. I move that we approve proclamation 2017-12.
Do I have a second? Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Counsel, we have a gentleman, Scott Hensel. Scott, would you like to come forward, please? He is with the Children's Advocacy Center of Denton County, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, would you come forward and I have a proclamation over there to present you.
Scott, thank you for coming. Thanks for what you do for the people that are victims of domestic violence in Denton County. It's a valuable service that's needed and specifically for children and protecting their rights. So, thank you very much. Appreciate what the agency does.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Did you want to say anything?
I just appreciate y'all's support, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Item number eight. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council recognizing October 22, 2017, as bicentarian of the birth of Bahia Ula in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. It's proclamation 2017-13, I'd recognize Councilmember Rowe to read and move the proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing October 22, 2017, as the bicentenary of the birth of Bahia Ula in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Whereas, October 22, 2017, marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Bahia Ula, the founder of the Bahai faith; and whereas Bahia Ula's teachings promote oneness in humanity, the elimination of all forms of prejudice, a spiritual solution to economic problems, and the equality of women and men to be a healing balm to the ailments of the world; and whereas the United States has been bestowed a lofty destiny to become a land of spiritual distinction and leadership, a champion of justice and unity among all peoples and nations; and whereas the Bahai community of Trophy Club, Texas, is promoting the teachings of Bahia Ula by engaging in community-building activities that empower participants of all ages to serve as agents of social change, working together for the betterment of this community and the world; and whereas the Bahais of Trophy Club and their families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues are commemorating this bicentenary along with Bahais across the United States and around the world, now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, does hereby recognize October 22, 2017, as the bicentenary of the birth of Bahia Ula, urging all to resolve on this day to promote the qualities and attributes that will help bring about the recognition of the oneness of humanity, to embrace diversity, and to work for unity in our local community, in our country, and in the world. Pass and approve by the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 10th day of October 2017. I move we approve proclamation number 2017-13.
Second. And Councilmember Jensen, seconds. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. I probably won't pronounce her name correctly, but I will try. We have Shereen Hamril?
Oh, Shereen Hemright.
Kinda? Okay, well, would you come forward, please, and would you like to say a few words about you have a special event happening in South Lake?
Sure. Do you guys want to come up here, join us? Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for all of your help and effort and time and energy that you guys put into making Trophy Club such a great community to live in. My name is Shereen Hemright and I'm a member of the Bahai community here in Trophy Club and the Bahai community is a worldwide religion based on love, unity, respect of all types of people, religion, all backgrounds, all racial backgrounds, sexual backgrounds, you know, any kind of background there is. So we believe in bringing about unity amongst all the peoples of the world. And October 22 marks the 200th anniversary of the birth of Bahia Ula, which is a messenger for the Bahai faith. And we're having a big to-do and we would love for all of you guys to come join us. You guys are all welcome. It's going to be at the Mark in South Lake from 2:00 to 5:30 and you are all welcome to come join us and celebrate love, unity, oneness of humanity and we would love to get to know you guys more and be able to be of more service to your community, to Trophy Club. We have a few of our members of the Bahai community here with us and we're part of a much larger world community and so if there's ever anything that you need from us, we would love to help you guys out and we would love to serve our community as best as we could. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it so much. Let's get a picture.
I would love to. Wait, wait, wait. I got my glasses off. I'm sorry. Glasses are great. Sorry, they are. It's a bit of a glare though. Do you mind if we do a good picture? Is that okay?
No, please, everybody come on up.
That would be fabulous.
Half over there, half over here.
I can count. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you. I've got my glasses, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Want to shut down? Came back up. Council recognizing October 4, 8 through 14, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Would recognize Mayor Protem Rowe for reading the proclamation and to make the motion.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, supporting the week of October 8 through 14, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Whereas, the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the Town of Trophy Club; and whereas, the U.S. Fire Departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association; and whereas, U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78% of all U.S. fire deaths; and whereas, newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions; and whereas, many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments; and whereas, these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds; and whereas, a home fire escape plan provides the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation; and whereas, a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting; and whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household; and whereas, practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation; and whereas, the Town of Trophy Club's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education; and whereas, the Town of Trophy Club's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes; and whereas, the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, does hereby proclaim October 8 through the 14, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week, urging all the people of Trophy Club to find and develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Trophy Club's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Pass and approve by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 10th day of October 2017. I move that we approve proclamation number 2017-10.
Second. Second by Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it does carry. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Wade Carroll to come forward to receive the proclamation and also all those officers, if you would, please. You didn't know you were going to do that, did you? Farman, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is the men of B shift that will be joining us up here today. That's Captain Donnie Hurd, engineer Greg Booze, firefighter Steve Rusk, firefighter Kalau Evans, and firefighter Justin Smith will be joining us up here tonight.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Yeah, bend down, put your hands on your knees.
Item number 10. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a meritorious exception for a development signed proposal located at 2980 East State Highway 114, the property being located in the PD 25 zoning district. At this time, I'll recognize Lisa Payne if she has any comments to make. Do you have any? Oh, okay. Never mind, Tommy Uzy. If I looked up back there, I would see it.
Didn't expect that one, did you?
No, I didn't. Okay.
The case went before P&amp;Z for approval on the condition that the sign be removed at the same placing, or at the same time that a permanent sign would be placed on it. The case basically relates to the sign being of correct size, which is 32 square feet, but to be mounted higher above grade, which makes it at 10 feet instead of the five feet because it'll be two feet off the ground, so.
And that's the reason for the exception, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And we do have Dennis Sheridan, P&amp;Z chairman, here. Dennis, you could have said anything.
Yes, Mayor, just briefly. There, the reason for the split...
things, just so that everyone is familiar with what happens. We have a deadline for when we need to get the council packet out and post the agenda. Turns out, that's about the same time that P&amp;Z meets, so we really didn't have any idea what they might decide. So I made the decision to put it on the consent agenda, knowing that if council needed to pull it, we just pull it from the consent agenda, and then we discuss it. So afterwards, we then found out that there was some dissenting vote, there were some questions, and there were some conditions. And so in order to allow discussion and vote on that, we then reposted the amended agenda, and that's the reason we are discussing it at this time. So Chris Gordon is here? Nope, Justin is here. I have a note here that says Chris Gordon is here. You must be representing him, is that right, Justin? No? Okay, good, okay. Do you have any comments? You don't need to comment unless you just want to. All right. There are also, I think, just because we've had some discussion about this internally with staff, if you make the motion tonight, just to make sure it's clear that you either include or not include the exception that P&amp;Z placed upon the applicant about the sign being removed. So include that in your motion so that we're clear about what we are approving. Anybody wishing to make a motion or have discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve case ME-17-001, omitting the condition placed by P&amp;Z relative to the timing, and if I get a second, I'll explain why.
Second.
We have issues, we have portions of our signed ordinance to deal with temporary signage, and this is a request for temporary sign, so I don't think it's, I think it's duplicitous to deal with timing in the motion, so, yeah.
All right. Yes, Eric?
I'd like it on record, I have an issue with P&amp;Z taking issue that an applicant wasn't there. P&amp;Z's job is to review the application as presented, make a recommendation to the council, and not to chastise an applicant for not being there, and I don't appreciate it.
I want to second that.
Number Kurtz?
Kind of taken aback, you know, we've gotten on people that haven't shown up, and we've had to ask questions, but we're still here to, you know, approve or deny based on the merits, not whether a person shows up or not. So I just don't think it's good practice for us to go and do that just because someone doesn't show up. If they put in the work and it's here, we should be making the decisions based on the work.
All right. We have a motion and a second before us. Phillip, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to waive the permit fee.
I'll second.
And the reason that I do that is because I don't think that the, the way I read the ordinance, I don't think the permit fee is required on a temporary sense. So if they were to tilt this sign to make it 32 square feet and put it on the property, it would just be a temporary sign, and it would be allowed, correct? It would be. Yeah. So if you read our ordinances on temporary signs for developers, we don't require a permit fee. And so they've paid, according to the email that I received today, they have paid the meritorious exception fee, which is $50. And so I just don't, my personal reading of the ordinance, I don't think that it would be required to have a permit fee. If you go back to 2015, that was the breadwinners, there was no permit in the packet, there was only the meritorious exception. So that's my reasoning on that.
All right, so your motion to amend is to waive which fee?
Permit fee.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear. And you agreed with that, Councilmember Rowe, Mayor Pro Tem Rowe?
Yes, sir.
All right. Greg, you have a question?
On this, the fact that it's graded differently through it out of the height requirement, is that land eventually going to be graded all the same level in that design? Or is that a different area that it will always be higher than the different section of the property?
No, it's going to be, they've started their grading right now, and it's going to be that southeast corner, which is already low. That part wasn't high, where they're placing the sign, so it wouldn't be any higher than anything else on site right now, the way they've graded it out.
But did you not say that the reason the request was made because it was put in an area where the grading was higher?
No. The intent was to be able to raise the sign itself, 2 feet off the ground. Yeah, right.
If you turn it sideways, you're fine. You go long ways, and that triggers a meritorious exception. And they wanted it long ways so that 114 people that would see it.
All right. Any questions about the amendment? All right, all those in favor of approving the amendment which waives the permit fee, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, that is unanimous. We are now back to the main motion, which is approving the meritorious exception without the conditions that P&amp;Z stated. Is that correct, everybody?
Yeah, and I'd like to speak on that. I listened to the P&amp;Z meeting last night, and I, yeah, of course, I agree with Eric that just because an applicant doesn't show up, you know, you've got to look at, at, one, they've asked for this before in the past, and it was approved. I think my biggest concern with listening to the P&amp;Z meeting last night is, one, I don't think a vote should be decided on what we do with our agenda. So in other words, there were several comments that said, because we put it on consent, that it should not go forward. And what we do on our agenda has nothing to do with a P&amp;Z decision. And in fact, there was even a motion to deny based on our putting that on consent. And so that's one thing. And then there was also comments that there's no hardship, and why don't they just meet town ordinances? And I don't think there was a complete understanding of a meritorious exception. And if you read, and we were very clear when we did the sign ordinance, if you read in the sign ordinance, it says, and this is under meritorious exceptions, "It is the intention of these criteria to discourage," or, I'm sorry, "it is not the intention of these criteria to discourage innovation. It is entirely conceivable that signage proposals could be made that were clearly non-conforming to this article, and thus not allowable under these criteria, have obvious merit and not only being appropriate to the particular site or location, but also in making a positive contribution to the visual environment." So I think that we kept that in there for situations like this. And again, this meritorious exception is just for a temporary sign, not something that's going to be there, you know, for a long period of time. And so that's just sort of the comments that I had as far as listening to the P&amp;Z meeting, that I hope that they will recognize that the reasoning we have that meritorious exception is not, you know, there's a reason that we have that there, and I don't think that was fully understood.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Rowe?
Yes, sir, I have a question for you, Phillip, since you did us a favor and listened to the audio, and I haven't had a chance to yet. Was, regarding the discussion about the agenda, was there any interjection from staff regarding the procedural necessities of the way we lay out agendas?
No.
Okay.
The only, the only reason for staff of putting that on consent was because the mayor asked for it. That's what was said.
Okay, all right. I think as a group, as an entire functioning group that includes council and staff and appointed folks, we've got to remember that, especially on our appointed boards, we're cycling in new people periodically, and they don't have all the contacts that the rest of us have, and there may be appropriate times for guidance such as that. I mean, there is no need for anyone on a recommending board to concern themselves with the details of the minutiae of the way a council agenda is laid out. We have all of the things at our disposal to discuss whatever we want on the agenda, whether it's on consent or not. We have mechanisms in place. That's no one's concern. It is not an indication of the merits of the case that they're hearing at the time, and I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that that's how I expect them to operate.
All right. Councilmember Lamont?
I guess my issue is, I mean, sometimes you've got to fight your battles. I mean, to get caught up in, because of the sign, because of grading, it's one thing if they were changing the color of the brick, they were changing landscaping, the size of the building, then yes, they should come before, but for a simple sign, a change of a sign, I think that was going a little overboard.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as stated and as amended, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it was unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Review of and take appropriate action regarding amending the town's zoning map. You have a staff report, Council, you also have a handout at the dais. And this is on our agenda because Councilmember Schaffner noticed that the current zoning map, that the longstanding Loop Road had disappeared. It had been part of this town in its maps and planning since '99, as far as I can determine, and of course, never totally completed. Now, part of that road actually includes a road that's constructed today. So if you look at Trophy Club Drive, roughly at Bobcat, on around to where it ends today by the park, and at the, maybe that is northwest, northeast corner of town, that was part of the Loop Road. The extension of Indian Creek in some fashion was part of that, and ultimately, the ability for the Corps of Engineers to allow us to cross their property and the cost of doing so is something that the council would have to deal with. It's a longstanding item that our current master plan for the community includes such a road that connects east and west, and in order to potentially ever get that approved, you have to have it on all your documents. So noticing that it had somehow disappeared over the years, as the Highlands was developed and as Canterbury Hills was developed, it somehow kind of disappeared, and the junction of that road where it might hit also changed from time to time. So that's the reason it's on the agenda, was to make sure that we get our map correct. Now, that has given opportunity for people to have discussion on the internet about it, but this is an action that says basically we're putting the map back to where it was. I believe it was there up to 2008 or something like that, when it first was removed. All right, any discussion or would entertain a motion?
Just real quick, I didn't realize this until I saw the packet earlier today, but they're actually, it's present on one from 2011, and I thought it had fallen off prior to that, so that's, I know Captain Research, did you ever figure out what caused it to drop off?
I thought it fell off 2007. That's when, actually Dennis made the comment back then that, I think he paraphrased, and today's Dennis would have voted against it, but 2007, a little different, but he made the comment.
He was finding his way. He's a full-grown man.
He made the comment that, he said, and I'm paraphrasing it, "Two weeks ago, I looked at a map when we approved the golf course maintenance barn, and the Loop Road is on it. Today, it's not. Why?" And so, yeah, that's where I think it sort of came off back in 2007, but if you see it on 2011, that's...
Interesting, yeah, but you didn't see anything in minutes that indicated that it was, apparently it was just a staff thing that just kind of happened?
I think so. There was no council decision or P&amp;Z decision.
When Junction Way was planned and maybe being constructed, there was a meeting between staff of the town and the Corps whereby there was a drawing presented by T. Nolan Perkins about using Junction Way and how that might cross the Corps property at that point. I don't recall if that made it into the packet. Yeah, it did, didn't it? Okay. So that was part of the packet, that we've had that, and we had discussions about that some years ago when we were approving the plat for the wastewater treatment plant, was that we had a road easement in there, and we were trying to protect that.
And I think that, you know, when I first, I think the map that is kind of in between those two plats was something that council was given right when I first got on council, and I think Sly had T. Nolan Perkins design that, and actually had a cost at one point, because he was in pretty active talks at the time. But I think that all we're doing is putting back what has been the history of Trophy Club. So if you go, if you go look at the end of Trophy Club Drive, we have secured right-of-way for that road to continue. If you look at Junction, just like the mayor said, we have secured right-of-way. Had to fight for it, but we've secured right-of-way on both ends. And so I think all this is doing is just saying, if we get to that point, we at least sort of know the route, we have the right-of-way, you know, getting there is going to be a lot more difficult than what we're doing tonight, so.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the town's zoning map as presented?
I think we are just intended to give direction, right?
I don't know.
We don't, the new map doesn't have the road on there.
Take appropriate action regarding amending the...
Yeah.
Yeah. So we did have a map in our packet that had the road.
Not a new map, though. The 2017 map doesn't have it on there.
No, I think the...
Oh, there it is, yeah, it does. Oh, but that's, that's not the right one. It's not the right path.
I mean, it's not straight? I won't make that. It may not be an amendment, actually, as much as just getting an accurate map.
Again, I guess we can still approve it, but that's not the drawing that came, that doesn't reflect the drawing on page.
The one before it?
On, maybe it does.
I think it does.
Yeah, I think so.
You have to zoom in.
Yeah, it does, you're right. Y'all ignore me, I blew my entire brain reading 42 proclamations.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the zoning map as presented.
A second.
All right, moved by Schaffner, seconded by Rowe. Any discussion? All right, any questions that any of the citizens have tonight? I'm not quite sure if anybody was here to ask a question or talk about that. No one turned in a slip to talk. Tommy, any other comments?
Let me just interject that the town ordinance does require a formal zoning map that would include this document, and we're in process of having that produced as we speak, along with, which would include the Loop Road, as well as the title block for your signature and the town seal.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tommy.
And I want to interject, I appreciate staff for working on this. This is, I mean, you got this pretty quick, because I think we asked for it last meeting, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And T. Nolan Perkins, I think, did some work to make that happen, too. All right, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. It does pass. All right. Item number 12, consider and take appropriate action regarding proposed town council meeting dates for November and December. This is on our agenda as stated last time. We typically have only held one meeting in each of the months of November and December because of the holidays. And so what we're wanting here is specific direction from council as to what you would prefer, either both dates, the first, the second Tuesday of each of the months are a different date. So anybody wish to express what you'd like?
Make a motion that we have one meeting second Tuesday of November, one meeting second Tuesday of December 2017.
And those would be November 14?
I would just say that, November 14?
I'll second, so we can discuss.
November 14th.
So, so you're, is that what you're preferring, Jensen?
Yes, sir.
I would just remind Councilman Jensen that we may be traveling back from Las Vegas on the 14th. Just wanted him to know.
They can have a meeting without us, too.
Okay. We may be late.
We may be late.
All right, so the motion is to have only one meeting... All right, so the motion is to have only one meeting in November, in December, November 14th and December 12th, and council the others, cancel the others. Tom, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I'm not sure I stated that, Jensen moved and Rowe seconded. All right, 13, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the October 24th council agenda and items from the town council future agenda items list. Counsel, if you will, call your attention to page 117, which is the October 24th planning agenda, and I'm just gonna ask a question. Item 7A, just to clarify, is really there just because of the time of that future agenda coming back to discuss, right? And so I'm gonna go to town manager class, are there any plans at this time for staff being able to work on these pieces of land that Lamont wanted looked at?
Yes, sir, we've already started that process. We've identified all the parcels of land that would fall into those categories, and I've sent letters out to all the residents proposing, depending upon the certain circumstances for each of the properties, proposing a meeting with them if they're interested in either a transfer of property or to notify them that we will no longer be maintaining property that doesn't belong to the town.
All right, good. And then I notice that entryway monumentation is actually on that agenda, and so you feel like that's gonna be ready for discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody have something they think should go on this October 24th agenda? Hearing none, I then would call your attention to page 118 and 119 of our future agenda list. Does anybody wish to add, oops, not 119, or is it? Anybody wish to add an item to the future agenda list? All right, hearing none. We have then completed our regular session agenda, and just a moment, we will go into executive session, and I'll ask everyone that's not needed in our executive session to please vacate the room. Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. Section 551-071, consultation with attorney under subsection 2, to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, specifically pending litigation. B, section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate the purchasing, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. In section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under subsection 2, to discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town north of Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, is the location in general. C, section 551-074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Item 1. Economic Development Corporation 4B, its appointments to that and tax increment reinvestment zone board, its appointments to that board. It is 7:54, and we are in executive session. It is 8:36, and council will reconvene into regular session. Item number 15, consider take appropriate action regarding resolution 2017-22 and adopting a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of the unexpired term on Economic Development Corporation 4B, reaffirming existing appointments and the town council liaison and providing an effective date. Chair would recognize Mayor Pro Tem Rowe for a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve resolution number 2017-29, repealing resolution 2017-22 and filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on EDC 4B Corporation, appointing Jared Hall to a term expiring 2018, reaffirming all others effective immediately.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Jensen seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it does pass unanimously. Item 16, consider take appropriate action repealing resolution 2017-26 and appointing a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on EDC 4B Corporation, appointing Jared Hall to a term expiring 2018, reaffirming all others effective immediately. Do you have a second?
Second.
Jensen seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it does pass unanimously. Item 16, consider take appropriate action repealing resolution 2017-26 and appointing a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term of the tax increment reinvestment zone number 1, reaffirming existing appointments and the chairperson and providing an effective date. Chair would recognize Mayor Pro Tem Rowe for a motion.
I move that we approve resolution 2017-30, appointing Jared Hall to the, a term expiring in 2018 to the tax increment reinvestment zone number 1 board, reaffirming all other appointments effective immediately.
And the chair? Aren't you supposed to name the chair?
Oh, yes, and reaffirming chairperson David Brode.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Item 17, consider take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I don't believe anybody has anything there, any motions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Rowe moving, Jensen seconding. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, no opposed, we are adjourned at 8:39.
Well, that is quick work, y'all. Everybody patches...
With 22 proclamations to read.
We'd have been out an hour ago if we didn't have proclamations to read.
Why do all these people have...